Alright, the time is now 7:30 and I call this regular monthly meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees to order. Jen?
Yes.
Can you proceed with the roll call?
Trusty Doherty, yes. Trusty Gagani, yes. Trusty Humphrey?
There.
Trusty Stapleton?
Yeah.
Here. Thank you very much. At this moment, I would like to welcome the visitors to our meeting. Thank you for your interest in the library. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Four, Approval of Last Month's Minutes. Does anyone have any comments or questions or revisions on last month's minutes? Do we have a motion to approve last month's minutes?
I'm to approve last month's minutes.
Okay, do you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve last month's minutes. It has been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say aye. Okay, the minutes have been approved. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Five, Financial Matters. Does anyone have any... Julie Lesing, where are we at?
Oh, well, we are doing well. On the expenditure side, we are one-third of the way through the year as of this financial report. And we are running right as expected. On the revenue side, you will notice that there hasn't been a whole lot of revenue that does not start rolling in until the end of May as people begin to pay their property taxes, and then in June you'll see that big jump. It also depends on when the village finance folks post our portion of the property tax to the library's fund. So, it's coming in, it'll be here. On the invoices, you will see that there is an invoice for Mechanical Concepts of Illinois. That is their next payment, and they did reach all of the milestones required for that payment, and it was confirmed by Lara Engineering. So, that payment is being released. And there are a number of invoices, and as you can see, the edit list has quite few this month. So, if you have any questions, just let me know. Let's see. Oh, the First Light Technologies, the garden walk lighting. Ian is putting ballard lights by the garden walk out in the corner, and they are solar powered. So, the poles, we put solar power on the top, and the manual LED lights, so those should be looking here.
Where about are they? Are they high or...
They're full.
They're about thirty-nine inches.
Okay.
About.
It depends on how, it depends on how long the poles are laying.
Security.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, so that's it. And Print Smart won that summer reading stuff, prizes and challenges and whatnot, yes.
And have we, have the Frog Lady here before?
I'm not sure. Have we had the Frog Lady before?
I've seen the snake.
We have had the Frog Lady, we had the Frog Lady, I think, two summers ago. She, she's really cool. We really like her, yeah.
Based on the picture, she looks pretty cool.
Yes, she's pretty cool, very informative.
Reptiles.
Very fun. Actually, I think we have two reptiles from rooms with stuff.
There's our frog king.
The frog from the Frog Room. Yes. Gets lots of love, by the way.
What's that?
I'm not a person.
I do, actually. We don't have any questions. Does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the financial matters as presented?
So moved.
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented. It has been seconded. Jen, could you please proceed with the roll call?
Sure. Trusty Doherty, yes. Trusty Gagani, yes. Trusty Humphrey?
Yes.
Trusty Stapleton?
Yes.
And Trusty Greer?
Yes. Thank you very much. The financial matters as presented have been approved. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Six, Public Comment on Agenda Items. Does anyone have any public comment on agenda items? Okay, we're now on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Public Comment on Other Library Business. Does anyone have any comments on other library business?
Well, since you're looking at me. I've been showing up to these meetings for a while, and some of the, especially some of the new board members might be wondering who's that weirdo who keeps showing up. I think libraries are a very valuable part of our society, and this library has been a great library for years. A few years ago, I heard some very disturbing news taking place with some of the board actions, and that got me troubled quite a bit enough to motivate me to start coming here. I spoke out a few times, and I think, Dave, I think you're the only one that's here from Bagman Hills, Dave, is right? You know, I've pummeled.
Whatever, remember.
Yeah, yeah, so I've pummeled table, you know, tried to sway the board to try to do things. And the only reason I'm saying anything now, it doesn't matter what I think, but I think it's good that this board should hear from the public, and from the representative of the public, or one of the people from the public here. I think things have dramatically improved, and I'm very happy, and I'd like to commend all of you for the work that you're doing, and taking care of my library. So, thank you.
Alright.
Thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it. Keep coming.
Any additional comment on other library business? Okay, thank you very much. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Eight A, Summer Reading Presentation. Allison.
Allison, still being present.
Hi, so, hi, how are you guys? I'm not familiar with you before. My name was you before. I'm Allison, I am the department head for the Children's Services Department, so I'm going to talk to you guys about our summer reading program today. I'm very excited about. The program started on Sunday, actually, on the eighteenth, and our theme this year is "It's Showtime at Your Library." So, I don't know if you've been around the library, but we're already trying to put on show. So, it's going to be really, really a lot more exciting, so I'm going to tell you a little bit about what we're doing. So, our summer reading program, of course, is our incentives-based reading program for all ages from birth through, we always say, from zero to a hundred and beyond. You can sign up for this summer reading program. We have four different programs. We have a program for our youngest Read to Me, C R O five, which is basically parents reading to their children. We have a program for elementary school children and middle school children. We have a teen program, and then we have an adult program. So, the, I'm going to start just at the bottom, work my way up, and get a little more information about some of the other cool stuff we're doing this summer too. So, starting with our littlest learners is our Read to Me program. Our Read to Me program has parents reading to their children. It is three different levels of the year, five for each level, ten books per level. And after each, the first level, they get an ice cream cone from every day to Sunday across the street. Their second prize, they get a strip of stickers, and their third prize, they get a book, which they choose out and take home and keep, which we're really excited about. And so, that's the earliest one. I'll pass this around if you guys are interested in looking at them. Our second level is what we call our Readers Program. Our Readers Program is for kindergarten through eighth grade. Now, seventh and eighth graders are very lucky, they get to choose whether or not they want to do our program or the teen program. We usually tell them, check out which prize is better, because the reading's about the same. But, you know, what are you, what are you going to do? So, the kids program, we're continuing what we've done in the last few years, is we allow them to choose to keep track of their minutes or their titles. We have found this has been really popular, because we have a lot of kids that are reading Harry Potter or something else. It's going to take a very long time to keep track of their minutes, it's going to be a better option for them. And then, some of them, though, if they're reading short titles, might want to keep track of their titles. So, they can choose either six hours worth of reading or six books for each level. They can switch it up between levels, however they want to do it. Their first prize is also ice cream from every day to Sunday. Their second prize is a squishy, and guess what? I brought you all squishies, which I know. Of course, you can ask me and Ian, we use these all the time. If you like a squishy, or if somebody special here likes a squishy, I brought a squishy. And their third prize is also a book. For both this program and Read to Me program, the program's all the way to August fourth for everybody. So, if they finish this early, they are able to keep reading by the bonus pages, and for bonus pages, they can get tokens for five machines, or they can ring, raffles, raffles are good for campus and for our raffles. We have very, very cool raffles this year. We have a lot of really great donations from community partners. So, we have things like Cass's Two, and Superfield Two, and Shiny Aquarium, to more local places, local bowling alleys, and other home bases where kids and parents can go together. We have tickets to that big one, and things like that too. So, we're very excited. We have a lot of really great things this year. Actually, we had so much great community donations this year that with their third prize, they're also able to get a coupon pack for the people who really went above and beyond and gave us thousands of coupons. Like the Munchies in Downey Grove gives us a thousand coupons every year, so they'll get, every kid's going to get a Munchies coupon as well with their final prize too. So, we're really excited about that. So, that's the program. I'll pass these around to you if you're going to track with it.
I know.
And then, it just keeps going. We have our teen program. Now, teen and adult are doing something new this year. They are also giving their participants a choice of keeping track of their minutes or their books. For teens, it is six hours or three books, so they have like a one-to-two type of ratio. We have just a one-to-one. They have three levels, the same as us. They can pick a laptop ticket for their first prize. They get a ticket to Tilly or August and Sixth for their second prize, and they get a pop socket, which I think is a B P L, brilliant pop socket, for their third prize. So, we're really excited about that. I think they're pretty excited about it too, because I've had them in middle school, they always, I don't know, didn't have one, so, you know, we're excited about that. And then, like I said, adults also have this different option this year, because they can also keep track, let's see, probably guys. They can keep track of their minutes or their books, and it's the same thing for the fourth or fifth. Again, if you're going to try to do more case over this one, maybe that, right? You know, there's something else really huge. And so, then, when adults can do as many sheets as they like, well, they complete their birth sheet, they get their Tilly ticket, and then after that, all those raffle practices, which I universally put together, so I don't have to pull, but they're always very, very cool. Again, a lot of donations from, a lot of someone who are down on businesses here, and some really fun stuff like that. And I brought in these so that you can all take one, so you guys can start, all of you are summer reading, of course. We started handing out packets for all ages, starting on Saturday. In the kids' room, we visit all of the elementary schools in Downers Grove, so we go to all eleven District Fifty-Eight schools. We go to St. Mary's, St. Joe's, Downers Grove Christian. I don't think we made anything of it, we're pulling this year, but we did rock, give them, some of them, some packets, depending on what we need. So, we're really excited about that. For us, of course, reading over the summer is very important. We worry about summer learning loss, which is something that can happen if children are not doing, keeping up their skills over the summer. There's a bunch of different studies that say exactly how much it is, and there's a bunch of different factors of how much actually, how much summer learning is actually lost. But summer, which can be one, maybe months' worth of learning can be lost during the summer months if their skills are not kept up. Reading and then math in particular, and we also partner with the District Fifty-Eight PTA, who hosts their summer math clubs here in our meeting room three times over the summer. And what they do, that's their program, but basically, they give the kids math sheets to do, and then they can have any prizes for doing math, so they can come to the library, get their some reading prize, their math prizes altogether. We're really excited about that. We have a lot of really awesome programs going on this summer, as in Frog Lady, June. We also have Dave DiNasso, who's our other reptile guy, he's coming in August. We have a Jingle Dance concert in July, do a lot of really cool things. In the kids' room, we actually have something going on every single day, during June, July, and majority of August. Usually, multiple things a day, so we're excited. We have lots of people always saying, we're just always looking for interviews, or trying to provide. So, our summer reading flyer actually just came this Monday. So, this is a special edition, and it has June, July, and August in it. It'd be a lot of parents who just want something to put right up onto the fridge, and that's what we provided. So, I'm really happy to that too, and take your interest in it, in case you haven't picked yours up yet, for those of you who have kids. Adults and teens have a lot of really cool things going on too. Teen, and we have this doing the hip hop for teens, which is at the end of May, which she's excited about. We have kind of a fam, an all ages program in July, or June, to celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of Moon Landing. They're from the Amneal Armstrong Incorporated, and so, we're advertising it to everybody, families, teens, so adults are excited about that. And there's a lot of other really fun things going on. We feel really good, we're really excited. I actually just came from our volunteer sign up right before this, when we had thirty-five kids sign up to be volunteers in our department this summer, and that's just so far. We have another sign up session on Saturday, so.
What ages are the volunteers?
So, volunteers is going into fifth to going into twelfth grade this year, so they extended. So, basically, what they do is they set at our prize desk and hand out prizes to the kids when they come in. It's a really great use of volunteers. They get volunteer time. Sometimes they do other things too, like usually having to stuff our prize halls for sort of machines or clean puzzles, things like that. But then, they get kind of that little bit of that job experience, a little customer service, and we teach them how to deliver the library's customer service promise as well. And so, that is pretty much our summer. Do you guys have any questions?
She's doing her spirit, huh?
Well, this one's really dead early. This is, we're almost, the planning's the hardest part for us, and then we just go into it. So, my program coordinator, Daisy Sosick, was just talking to me about twenty-twenty programs today, so that's where we are. We're in the future, so. During the summer, it's just about actually doing it, and then getting to see all the people come and see us during the summer too. Yes, every day, and we're excited. Lots of fun stuff going on, so.
Thank you very much, Allison.
You're very welcome.
And I just, I didn't realize that the fiftieth anniversary of the Moon Landing, like essentially coincides with Woodstock.
Yes, it does.
Which is amazing.
Yeah, but yes, it's very cool on that.
Living in the wrong era.
Yeah, it is. It's been here very good, so.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're now on to Agenda Item Eight B. Julie, do you want to just kind of update the board on?
Alright, so, actually, I will just say that everything that the board discussed in April was included in the amendment to the contract. Our lawyers drafted it, Mechanical Concepts had no changes, and Wen Penn signed it, so it's all ready to go. And I will hand it off to Building Operations Manager Ian Nor for the big update on the project.
Yeah, so we are, we are moving right along. Train Chicago is finished with the automation system upgrade. I'm actually using it right now, and getting ready to train the staff on how to use it. That's coming in the next week or so. They will need to make a couple of trips back. Right now, we're working on the boiler plant. That was completely demoed out on May fourteenth. So, everything that was in there one day was taken out and gotten rid of. The new boilers are in. They were delivered yesterday. They're set in place. And all the rest of the parts and pieces that we need for the boiler plant are here on site. We have them in our possession. So, that's why we released payments to MCI. That was one of the stipulations that we did have, is we want everything if we're going to release it, which they came through and they delivered everything for us. So, there was a little bit of concrete work, because the new pumps are a little bit bigger. The system itself in a whole is actually bigger, and it's funny, you think the more energy efficient it would be, the smaller it would get? No, the more energy efficient it is, it actually gets larger. So, as we get further along, maybe in June, we'll, we'll do a little field trip into the boiler room, and you guys can see what's going on. But we're, we're cruising right along. Tomorrow is going to be the start of pipe fabrication and welding. We're looking at about two weeks of that, so we are still not going to have boilers for at least another two weeks. And then, after they're completely finished, the electrician will come in, put it out, everything on his end, as far as the relays go, and the variable frequency drives, and tie all that in. And then, Train will have to make another trip out to tie in those points. They're there in the computer, so it's just a matter of them leaking it from the, all the machinery in the boiler room into the control panel, so about a day. I forecast that we should have startup with, with MCI bringing out their startup representative from Lock and Bar, June eleventh, twelfth, on the boiler plant. We should be fully operational. That date may change, it actually has right now about a day ahead of schedule. So, I have been working very close with the two pipe fitters that are there, Mike and Steve. I think, honestly, the worst part of what happened is behind us. In fact, MCI is actually getting the rooftop units in July and sitting on them, so they know that they have them for that September three day. They're, they're keeping them in their yard, still crated up and everything. They just want to make sure that they're there right when they have. So, we're still good to hit that September third date. You know, like I said, everything's been running really, really smooth, and I think it's just going to keep progressing that way. I don't foresee any issues coming up at all. As far as RTU replacement goes, that September third, I'd be surprised if it takes more than two days to get up and fully operational and tied into the system and have everything all set and done. So, no, we're, we're moving along pretty good. The new automation system's really nice. I'm able to remote in, which is really good. I've had to a couple of times, and now it's, you know, the end user experience is really good, and support's been really good. I'm still working on the program, or to let them give me some rights to some stuff that I want, and we're, you know, just a little bit more control over everything, you know, and it shouldn't be a problem. But yeah, we're looking about another two and a half weeks without boilers. But we can adjust the discharge air time on the rooftop units to accommodate, so we're not getting too cold, so.
You want to be able to dim the lights remotely?
That, I do not do lighting automation on this. That would affect the project really, alright.
So, we're not, we're not expecting a cold snap in early June?
No, no, I, and.
We've already had our cold snap.
We've had it. I will tell you that this, this building remains to keep really, really good. So, and it doesn't take a lot to warm it up.
Invite a lot of people.
Yeah, right. Did you have any questions for me about anything?
I don't think so. I just, as you were explaining all of this, I was thinking, and I think we've mentioned this before, like it's, it's great having you represent the library, like in working with, doing, you know, the work that you're doing, because I think it would be a little lost now without.
Well, I'm happy to be here, so.
Thank you.
It's, it's, it's a, you know, please don't quote me too widely, but we've had, we've had years when we didn't have quite this level of confidence.
Sure.
I'll get them next time.
And I will, I will also, just like you had too, that the equipment, as I was, I kind of took Jen through the boiler room before we came in here, so she could see it. And everything that we spec'd out, I mean, it's top of the line. Honestly, at this point, it doesn't get much better. It will be more energy efficient, and it's going to cost us way less to heat and cool the building. I mean, we're going to notice a significant difference, not only in our night core bill, but also in our energy consumption, so.
Explanation for what I just said, maybe I need to take this to the, we've, we've never had in my tenure here, a person with your, in your job description.
Sure.
We've subcontracted everything, and that is wonderful having you.
Does it matter, like if, if in September there was a major storm, a thunderstorm or something, would that prevent the work from, I'm assuming that, that would be the one variable of your weather.
The only time that they wouldn't, that they wouldn't land and set is if it's thundering, like. And that's just because you've got that huge boom, and you know, it's not, it hasn't, you have a lightning rod just taking off in the air. That would be the only thing that would hold us back on that day, so. But if it's, if it's raining, they'll work through it, because they know they need to meet that date. They might not hook up the electric that day, but they'll at least have them set in place, so that way it'll only take a matter of hours the next day to tie in all that electric. And since it's the same footprint, everything is going to line up exactly right. It's not going to take a long time for those rooftops. That's honestly the easiest part of the job.
We've all seen YouTube of the crane, was it ten-story crane farm?
Yeah.
So, the, I think, I think the, the business that we as a board need to do is approve the ordinance, the change order essentially, which is set forth in Agenda Item Eight B. I reviewed this also anyway. We had a lawyer do it, I reviewed it, I'm comfortable with signing it. Dave is also required to sign it.
I'm excited to sign it.
So, I think we need a motion to approve the ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash one as set forth in Eight B.
I will move to approve the change order in Eight B.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the change order set forth in Eight B that has been seconded, and Jen, do you want to take the roll call on this?
Trusty Doherty, yes. Trusty Gagani, yes. Trusty Humphrey?
Yes. Yes. Thank you very much. Should we sign it now, or do you want us to wait till after?
We can wait till after the meeting, have a ready-to-go canned version.
Okay. We're now on to Agenda Item Eight C, Illinois Non-Resident Library Card Program.
And this is an annual decision that the board has to make, whether or not to participate in the, in the non-resident card program that allows us to sell fee-based cards to people who are not served by any library. There are about ten percent of the population of the state of Illinois falls in a non-resident area. In our area, we just have a couple of unincorporated. According to state law, it's supposed to go by their home school district. Whatever library primarily serves that are home school districts, so there are quite a few of those in, that are in District Fifty-Eight. So, we had very little change in our levy last year, so that makes the general, we've used the general mathematical formula. The statute stipulates what formulas you can and can't use. We've used general mathematical for a number of years, and that formula would be the same as last year, two-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars a year, and that does include all the household members who sell those non-residential cards. So, I am recommending that we move forward with that and approve that effective August first. That, we usually do it August first every year, so that if there is a change in the fee, we have time for the circulation staff to share that information with our non-residents who regularly buy.
But the fee is unchanged.
But the fee is unchanged this year.
I move that we, is it appropriate for the moment? I move that we approve the non-resident library fee card for remaining two, unchanged from last year.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded to approve, Jen, item Eight C, the Illinois Non-Resident Library Card Program, maintaining the annual fee at two-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars for non-residents. Jen, would you like to take a roll call?
Sure. Trusty Doherty, yes. Trusty Gagani, yes. Trusty Humphrey?
Yes.
Trusty Stapleton?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. Agenda Item Eight C has been approved. Agenda Item Number Nine, Unfinished Business. We believe we have unfinished business. Okay, so we're now on to Agenda Item Number Ten, which is the Library Director's Report.
So, you have my written report. The foundation has met and discussed how to move forward with the securing a work of art for the wall in the lobby. So, they are going to move forward with having three artists who were in the original pool for R and Ps that were, that either did not respond for extenuating circumstances, or one that responded, but the work turned out to be too large for the space. So, those three are being invited to submit proposals again, so we're very hopeful that we come up with something out of this group that they can, they feel very strongly about. And they were in that original group of seven that was sent to you all with the links to those various artists. We are also moving forward with our event to screen the movie, The Public. This movie is, was done, written, directed, and produced by Emilio Estvez. He also stars in the movie. And it's about a library bearing a polar vortex in a community that does not have enough shelter for their homeless population, and the homes take over the library overnight. And so, it's, I went to see this at the Oak Park Public Library's fundraiser on the fifteenth. The movie is very thought-provoking and well-done. It does include like every librarian stereotype ever. But it also portrays these stories of individuals experiencing homelessness very forthrightly. And there were a number of folks at that event that spoke up during the question and answer. They had a panel discussion afterwards, who talked about how true it really, the movie was to their experience, and asked some good questions. So, we're looking at doing that event in partnership with DuPage Pats. So we're looking at doing that event in partnership with Dupage Pads, and then also doing a series of programs to help raise awareness of the issue of homelessness and folks in need here in the Downers Grove community. So our tentative date for the movie screening is October 2nd, and then we're looking at some other times throughout the month of October to do some follow-up presentations.
You, so is that focusing on Downers Grove pads, or are you marketing throughout the country?
We're really focusing on Downers Grove. There, our event will be very focused on what it means in the community of Downers Grove.
We have three sites, three pad sites in Downers Grove. We'd like to focus on those three.
One of the events we were discussing, we have not talked to our three faith communities yet, but the idea was to have at least one of our events focused on volunteer and volunteer experience in working with Dupage Pads and our few local faith communities.
Go ahead and, remember, you served me, the Pads season in Downers Grove opens October 1st.
Kicks off in October, and that's one of the reasons that we chose that date.
Excellent.
And then, that's a lot. Yes, and that will be here typically, their wonderful partner. And we are, the foundation is discussing underwriting that event and encouraging donations to pads, but not requiring a donation in order to attend the event. The movie is PG-13, and I would say that anyone who wants to bring someone under 13 should read the IMDb parent guide to the movie, because it's spot. And, let's see, any other questions about that part? We have been warned by our LIRA, the Libraries of Illinois Risk Agency, our liability and property insurer, to expect larger-than-past increases in our liability insurance due to the, 2018 was a record year of loss for property in the Midwest, and actually worldwide, and the, and 2017 had been the previous record year. So the insurance industry is, there's been a real hardening of the market, and there are a number of. Yes, and there is a repricing going on. So we have been warned to make sure that you are budgeting appropriately.
So this is not library-specific, this is much larger?
This is much larger. This is about a shift in tornado alley and the increase in flooding and all of the crazy storms that have been had, hail damage, all of those things have contributed.
So it says a rate will, will never be in the budget this year, or?
We will, we will go ahead. Our insurance pool, our premium is actually due in January of every year, so it's one of the first things that gets paid. So we will put in that budgeted amount for 2020 and hope that they're not, that it doesn't come in at more than that.
Yeah, we have to budget it in the fall, but we won't get our number until.
Yes, exactly. It's one of the difficult things about our budget cycle. We also don't know about our benefits. So we have health insurance and benefits for the staff. We don't get those renewal numbers until.
It is nice, though, that they are letting us know. I mean, this is well in advance, so we can plan for it.
Since this is a, like, really good group, is there any chance that maybe long-term, you might give a chance for years to start it in March or something? Cool, and is that too much to ask for?
Yes, it's now. And then, we also have, we are working with Aurora University to possibly be a host site for social work interns. So this is something that's been done by Aurora Public Library and Elmhurst Public Library very effectively. As a matter of fact, Elmhurst decided to hire on one of their first social work interns as a permanent staff member. So we are very hopeful to get that project launched possibly this fall. And we have interim requirements for both the Bachelors of Social Work and the Masters of Social Work, are one of the largest programs in the West. So this would be great. And I think it would really help, help fill the need in connecting our users with services. And then on the compensation system, we did not receive the report from Focus HR in time to get into this, into this board packet. And the way things are going, you will probably see a 2020 salary schedule only, and the plan for the minimum wage hike for subsequent years will come later. Oh, and Caitlin Babelitis, our wonderful executive assistant, had her baby on May 3rd. Six pounds, 12 ounces, 20 inches long. Grayson Michael Babelitis, if anybody wants to see the picture, I haven't. Mother and baby are well, and big sister Izzy is adjusting, and so things are going well. And Sophia Vaughn, our administrative assistant, has stepped up and is now working full-time. So she's been fantastic in trying to fill Caitlin's very large shoes.
All right, thank you very much. We're now on to Agenda Item 11, trustee comments and requests for information. Do we have any additional comments or requests for information from the trustees?
I would just say that I've heard positive feedback about the Republic Bank Woodstock exhibit on the second floor. And it was great that Christie and PR put it out on the website, and so thank you for passing that along. And welcome. Appreciate that.
It's a lot of fun, if you haven't seen it, go take a look. It's only here till Saturday.
Well, and what I found, I think, most interesting, Kim and I actually went to a presentation on this, but the, there's a t-shirt that shows kind of the, you know, when the bands were playing. And I think it was on the Sunday into Monday, they just kept playing. It's like, you know, there were, somebody would come out at 2:00 in the morning until 2:45. And then I think Jimi Hendrix started up playing at 9:00 AM Monday morning. And he was essentially the headliner, and, but he didn't play until Monday morning. And only, I think they said about 10% of the people who went to Woodstock stayed that long, because it was so rainy and it was, and the other, we'll talk about it afterwards. I can go on and on about Woodstock, but we learned. I'll wear my t-shirt next time.
Yeah, I was almost there. Regretted.
That's only $6 to go.
And the fence fell over, so you could have just walked right in.
I guess I could have got closer.
Miles, you walked in.
You did a big job.
All right, looks like we're on to Agenda Item 12, and I hereby adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everybody.